Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to the Millville Special Town Meeting of November 1st, 2023. It is confirmed that we do have a quorum present, so with that being said, I will call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence to honor our civil servants, military, and frontline personnel who are dedicating their lives protecting our freedoms, safety, and democracy, both at home and abroad. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time tonight, I'm going to do a little bit out of order. I just want to make sure I think with the school committee article, I do know that there are some folks here representing our sister town of Blackstone. Welcome. If there's anybody in the room who is not a Millville-registered voter, you should be wearing an observer badge right now, and I'm going to ask that you come and sit in this section over here with Dr. DeFalco. You're in detention. The main reason for that is because I'm going to need everybody's cards for voting purposes, and I just want to make sure that we're accurately counting the votes. So if you do not have a yellow card and you are a registered voter, please go back and see the tellers. You will need that to vote. If you do not have a yellow card because you're wearing an observer badge, please just make your way over to this section so that we can keep the meeting organized. I appreciate it. So with that said, good evening, everyone, and I'm happy to see you all here tonight assembled for our town meeting. At this time, I would like to introduce myself, Jackie Lima, the town moderator, and I'll pass it over to everybody on the stage to introduce themselves as well.
Jennifer Gill, Chair Board of Selectmen.
Andrew Alward, Board of Selectmen.
Richard Bremmels, Board of Selectmen.
Roland Barrett, Board of Selectmen.
Matthew Mailey, Board of Selectmen.
Claudette Barrett, Chair of FinCom.
Helge Liedke, Fine FinCom.
Sierra Gallagher, FinCom.
We also have Diane Lockwood, our town clerk, Peter Caruso, our town administrator, and Brian Riley, town council. So make sure you have your yellow cards. See, I told you we were going out of order. Okay. Also tonight, I just want to make sure there are packets on the back, which are the actual warrant spelling out the articles that we'll be voting on for tonight. You should have picked one of those up when you came in. If you didn't, please raise your hand. One of the clerks can walk it down for you so you can follow along tonight. All right. You'll see tonight that there are eight articles contained in our warrant that we'll need to address. Before doing so, I'd just like to take a minute to review our procedural rules that ensure we have a productive meeting. So as is the case with every town meeting, all attendees here tonight are expected to be respectful of everyone in attendance and of the meeting itself. You don't have to agree with everyone here, but you must remain respectful. As the moderator, I have the responsibility to ensure this meeting maintains this standard and ask anybody who is not conducting him or herself appropriately to do so or to leave the room. Going forward, I'll read an article. A motion will be moved and seconded. There'll be a three-minute limit for the person who moves the article to make a presentation about the article. Any resident wishing to speak for or against an article may raise their hand, be recognized, come down to a microphone that is located at the front of the room. You'll be asked to state your name and address clearly for the record, and then you'll be given up to three minutes to talk. At the conclusion of three minutes, I will thank you for your comment, and you'll need to stop speaking and take your seat. After every resident who wishes to speak has a turn. People who wish to speak again may have another three minutes. All questions and discussion should be addressed to the moderator. If appropriate, I will ask someone on our stage to respond. Please do not address a previous speaker, a town official, or another resident directly. Discussion and questions must be relevant to the motion that we are voting on, and it's my job to ensure this. I will limit or stop discussion if a comment is not within the scope of the article being voted on. Throughout the meeting, there may be instances where I will allow nonresidents to speak if they can contribute relevant information or offer expertise to any article that we are voting on, provided that there are no objections from the room. This could include, but is not limited to, our town administrator, town council, superintendent, members of our school district, town planner, or other department heads. So without any further ado, we'll commence the business of this meeting. As stated, I will propose a motion. Someone on the stage will move it or in the audience. So the wording I'm going to say may be a little bit different than the warrant that you have in your hands. We'll be filling in the dollar amount, but I'm sure you'll be able to follow along. If there are any questions, let me know. Otherwise, we'll begin. Come on down to the microphone, Aaron. State your name, please.
Aaron Vinoco, Albert Drive. Just a point of order, how many voters are in the room?
Can we get a final tally from the clerk? At last check, there was over 80. Do we have a number of 87? Thank you. Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Article 1. I would be looking for a motion that the town vote to authorize that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items, as recommended by the Finance Committee, presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding as being from available free cash or the line item, article, or other funding sources that will be reduced by the same amount. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Claudette Barrett. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sierra Gallagher. Claudette, did you want to speak to the article?
Sure. Typically, we see this article at any town meeting when an individual making or amending a motion wants to increase any budget line item not recommended by the FinCom, they must also provide the source of the funding for the increase.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article 1, please raise your yellow card. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. The article passes. Article 2. I would be looking for a motion that the town vote pursuant to General Law Chapter 44, Section 64, to transfer from the General Stabilization Fund, a sum of which is necessary for the purpose of paying the following outstanding bills from prior fiscal years. FY '23, Bill to Northeast Water Solutions, invoice number 11032, as adjusted, in the amount of $7,360.50, and in FY '23, payable to Northeast Water Solutions, invoice number 11033, as adjusted, to an amount of $14,324.93. Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
There's been a motion made by Helge. Is there a second?
I second.
A second made by Claudette. Would Finance Committee like to speak to the article?
Yes, please. So these are two bills who have already been incurred. So these are pre-existing invoices from Northeast Water Solutions. So it is recommended that we, as town, authorize to pay these outstanding invoices for the fiscal year 2023. The total of these two invoices is $21,685.43, and the source would, by guidelines, be the Capital Stabilization Fund, and that is currently, as of October 28, 2023, at a balance of over $11 million, so $1,022,480.54.
Thank you. So just to clarify for this, per Mass. General Law, any article being voted on that is to pay a prior year actually requires nine tenths of the registered voters in the room to approve this. So I believe in the warrant that you have in your hand, it says it's a four-fifths, but the requirement for the state statute is actually going to be a nine-tenth. So are there any discussion from the audience? Questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. Okay. So this article is passing, and it's not unanimous, but it certainly is a nine-tenth. Article number 3. I'd be looking for a motion that the town vote to appropriate an additional $52,000, as deemed necessary to adjust the town expenses from what was previously approved in Article 6 of the Millville May 8, 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant for the Line Item "Millville Elementary Water Operations," Budget Line Item 1003005230, and to meet this appropriation by transferring the sum of $52,000 from the General Stabilization Fund. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Motion made by Claudette Barrett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Jen Gill. Claudette, did you want to speak?
Sure. This article allows the town to transfer the $52,000 from General Stabilization to the MES Water Operations Budget Line that was previously approved at the annual town meeting.
Thank you. For housekeeping purposes, because this is pulling from the General Stabilization, it will require a two-thirds of the members present vote to approve. Is there any questions or discussion from the audience? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your yellow cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes with a two-thirds majority. Article 4. I'd be looking for a motion to move that the town hereby approves the $126,950 borrowing authorized by the Blackstone Millville Regional School District to pay costs of a feasibility study to consider options for developing a new Blackstone Millville Regional High School located at 175 Lincoln Street, Blackstone, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto the study, and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended at the direction of the School Building Committee. That the town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a nonentitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any study costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities, provided further that any grant the district may receive from the MSBA for the study shall be as set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA, and that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. So there's been a motion by Aaron Vinoco. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara Larkin. Aaron, do you want to speak to the article for three minutes?
I actually think we have the superintendent that's going to speak to the article.
Okay. So the superintendent would like the three minutes to present the article on behalf of the school committee. Superintendent is not a registered voter in town. As long as there are no objections, I think he does have relevant and expertise information that the meeting would benefit from. So are there any objections? Dr. DeFalco, please introduce yourself and take it away.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. I'm Jason DeFalco, the very proud superintendent of Blackstone Millville Regional School District, and I'm really, really pleased to be here this evening and to be at this point in our process with requesting the dollars for feasibility study for what may turn into a renovated or new Blackstone Millville Regional High School. This project started four years ago as a capital planning committee was comprised from members of our boards and committees in our towns and representatives from the school district and the school committee. And we started out by doing a capital study across our five buildings in our school district. What we learned quickly was that our high school was in quite significant need, and in $2019, that need was to the tune of about $40 million. That led the capital planning committee to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to enter into what we hoped would be their grant program for an MSBA, again, either renovation, addition, or new build. We submitted our application in spring of '22, and in September of 2022, we learned that a senior study would be conducted. MSBA came out and visited the high school along with elected officials from both of our communities. In December, last December of 2022, we learned that we were one of 10 schools out of the 58 total applications that was invited into the pipeline. As of June 1st, our official clock started ticking for what is called an eligibility period, which kind of the headline to that is we have until February 26th to bring forward the request for a feasibility study to our two communities to hopefully have them approved so that we can hire a team of architects and engineers to come in and not only look at the high school, but look at all of the school buildings across our district and make recommendations on how best to address the over $40 million in repairs for the high school that are needed. So we're thankful for the time this evening and for the opportunity to speak to this. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who'd like to speak to the article? Come on down.
Norman Gamash, 31 Hockness Road. I guess one question I have, this $126,950, where's that coming from? It's going to be borrowed, and we have to pay it back, right?
That is correct. So the way the article reads, and school committee, please clarify, but if we are at the end of the feasibility study, if we go forward with the recommendations from the feasibility study, the amount that is borrowed, both our portion and the Blackstone portion, would be rolled into the bond for the project. I see nods of approval.
Okay. So it doesn't, it's not going to automatically cost us something until the feasibility study is accepted or approved?
So I believe this incurs a debt for the town, but then the payment of it would be rolled into the cost of the project?
If we go ahead with the project. If we don't go ahead with the project, then we still have to pay it, correct?
That is correct.
So that would have to go onto our tax bill?
So Aaron, do you know how that would be handled?
No.
Can you just introduce yourself, too? Just to make sure.
Aaron Vinoco, the Chair of the Blackstone Millville School Committee, Albert Drive in Millville. Through this process, I've learned a lot, and to answer your question in two parts, if the project was not approved once presented to both towns and we fell out of the MSBA process, I believe we'd have five years to pay that amount back. And I believe what was mentioned when the selectmen were accepting this warrant was that the money was available with the town right now. However, it's not something they have to put forward right now. It would be banded through the five years, hopefully rolled into the final project. So I don't believe it would affect the tax base personally. I think the way the selectmen talked about it with the $1 million in stabilization, that that is where they would fund it from, but it would probably take future votes.
And I think we'd have to cross that bridge at this time.
Right.
I mean, it's a valid question, but I think it's very speculative to know how we would vote down the road.
Now, if the project does move forward, what's the reimbursement by MSBA? I mean, they usually, they don't fund the entire project.
Right. So Aaron. Aaron, would you like to speak to what we know at this point?
Sure. So my understanding is they approve a reimbursement rate each year. This year, it is 59%. So 59% of that project would be paid for by MSBA. The 41% would be to the two towns.
And they'd have to approve that at a town meeting?
That's correct. The project, so this vote tonight is just for the feasibility study, and then we would address the outcome and the future project based on the results of the feasibility if and when we get there. So tonight, we're only focusing conversation on do we want to proceed with the feasibility study?
So the firm, do we go out for bid for this, correct? Or the school committee goes out for bid? If, you know, for the study that has to be done?
Sure.
The school building committee.
Right.
It's different than the school committee.
Well, the school building committee goes out for bid. Now, the company that will be doing the project, what do they do? They go in and look at all the schoolrooms, look at the facilities themselves, look at the condition of the roofs?
Sure.
How many children are out there?
Sure. So I'm going to have this be the last question, just in case other people want to get up, and then if you have more, Norm, I'm fine to let you come back after. But Aaron, can you maybe just comment on what the scope of a feasibility study would be to answer that question? Kind of what the process might look like, and maybe a timeline would be helpful.
So it's 12 to 18 months for this study to, from beginning to end, and they are going to look at our whole district, not just the high school. And they are going to essentially come back to us and say, this, you know, this is the work that's needed in your district, and this is what we recommend for what we've been accepted into.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Norm. Is there anybody else who would like to ask a question, make a comment? All right. Seeing none, Norm, did you, did you want to keep going? I wanted, I just wanted to make sure if anybody wanted an opportunity to talk, that everybody got an opportunity, but I did say if anybody wants to come up a second time.
I'm back.
Okay.
Norman Gamash, 31 Hockness Road.
Still.
I guess I'd like to know what the current population is in our high school and how does that population trending? I mean, a lot of high schools in the area, their populations are trending down as opposed to going up.
So I, I'm going to answer that. I think, I'll keep Aaron in her seat for a minute.
Okay.
I think that that is information that will come out of the feasibility. The school department has made the current population available as well as the size of, or the capacity of the four buildings that are online right now, but I think that the information about the future trends and what the future needs are going to be is exactly what this feasibility study is intended to help us with.
Okay.
Thank you. Sure.
Andrew Alward, Department of Selectmen. So for a trend, we have had a 10-year trend downwards with our high school population and school population in general, but I don't think that the scope of this, the project would be really looking at the population of the school.
Well, the recommendations, the recommendations of the feasibility will be based on the needs for the.
Would be on the buildings themselves, not necessarily the population like the trend of that, I don't think.
So I'm going to ask Dr. DeFalco to come on up and comment unless there are any objections from the room.
Thanks for the question. So they study not only the facilities, all the systems, structures, square footage, but they study the enrollment as well. If we move forward, we actually will have an enrollment meeting with MSBA on November 28th, so it is very much part of the process.
Thank you. All right. Are there any further questions or comments? I did ask the town clerk to go back and verify with the tellers because I did see more people come in. So just for clarification, I believe we're up to 92?
Yes.
Okay. So just to make sure that everybody in the room is clear, we have 92 registered voters voting on this article tonight, voting on every article tonight. Article 4 in particular requires a majority vote of the people in the room, so as long as there are 47 or more, the article will pass. So at this time, I'd like anybody who is in favor of passing Article 4, the feasibility study, to please raise your yellow card nice and high so I can get a count. Anybody opposed, please raise your card. Okay. The motion passes and is a majority. For Article 5, I would be looking for a motion that the town amend the Millville zoning bylaw in the Schedule of Use Regulations at Section 100-302B13, Major Residential Development, to be revised to Open Space Residential Development, OSRD, as defined in Article 7, and to revise the use chart to SP, Special Permit, in all districts for this line item. Is there a motion? Motion made by Jason Mailey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Andrew. Jason, did you want to get up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and maybe speak to the article?
Hello, everyone. Jason Mailey, 510 Chestnut Hill. Basically, what we're doing is we're trying to clean up some of the zoning bylaws based on recommendations from the CMR PC. All we're really doing is trying to simplify language. There's really not much more to it in this article.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from anybody else in the room? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. And because this is, sorry, because this is a change in a zoning bylaw, it will require two-thirds of the room to pass this. So all those in favor of Article 5, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and it is unanimous. Article 6. I'd be looking for a motion that the town amend the Millville zoning bylaws by approving the following changes to be made to Section 100-302, Schedule of Use Regulations of the Millville zoning bylaws as specified in the warrant as Article 6. Is there a motion? Motion made by Pamela Maloney. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Richard Bremmels. Pam, do you want to come and introduce yourself and speak to the article?
Hi, I'm Pam Maloney. I am Chair of Planning Board. As Jason mentioned, the articles that are here tonight related to our planning board are recommendations that we've received from the Central Mass. Regional Planning Commission in effect to help clean up our bylaws and make them easier for people to understand and to make our town a little bit more friendly to businesses. This particular article speaks to opening up some of the options in our business district for businesses, which are right now required by special permit. So this would make it easier for someone to come into our business district and have a business.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and it is unanimous. Article 7. I would be looking for a motion that the town amend the Millville zoning bylaws by approving the following changes to be made in Section 100-302, Schedule of Use Regulations of the Millville zoning bylaws as specified in the warrant, Article 7. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Justin Allen? Okay. It's hard with the lights up here. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Roland Barrett. Justin, did you want to come down and speak to the article?
Sure.
Again, this is a zoning bylaw change, so it'll require two-thirds majority to pass.
Hi, Justin Allen, 3 Tina Road, member of the planning board. Yep, so we've been working on cleaning up our bylaws using guidance and recommendations from the CMR PC. So this particular warrant article, our intended to clarify the bylaws. We want clear, articulate, error-free language. It helps avoid confusion, miscommunication, that kind of thing.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your cards. The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. And Article 8. I would be looking for a motion that the town adopt a bylaw authorizing tax title payment plans in accordance with General Law's Chapter 60, Section 62A, as written in the warrant. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Claudette Barrett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Matthew Mailey. Claudette, would you like to speak to it?
Sure. This article was previously approved at the annual town meeting. At the requirement of the Attorney General's Office, this article has been revised to specify the payment term length and the discount rate allowed in any tax title payment.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding the article? So town accountant?
Treasurer.
Treasurer, I'm sorry. Our town treasurer is here. She is wearing an observer badge. She's not a resident or a registered voter in the town of Millville, but I think she wants to speak to the article. So if there's no objections from anybody in the room, I will give her the floor for three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Jane Snell, and I'm your treasurer-collector, and just as it was in the spring, the reasoning behind this still remains the same. In order to allow me.
Jane, can you just speak into the microphone? They won't be able to hear it on the recording.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
In order to make longer payment plans, we need to get the bylaw passed. Right now, the typical one is only two years. The MCTA, which is the professional organization for Massachusetts collectors and treasurers, has. Massachusetts Collectors and Treasurers, has done studies, and they do find that with a longer payment term, there is a lot more compliance and a lot more successful resolutions to this. And the key is to make sure that the homeowner is able to remain in their home, keep their equity, and that the town gets the base taxes. The provision for allowing some of the interest that is accrued on the tax title portion does not affect the base taxes, which were part of the budget process and for which the town needs that allocation. So anything that gets rolled into the tax title account, which begins with the base taxes owed, interest accrued to date at the fourteen percent mandated rate, advertising costs, legal costs, and associated fees, all becomes part of the base. None of that will disappear. Only some of the interest at the sixteen percent mandated rate will be waived at the end of a successful payment term, when seventy-five percent of the payment plan payments have been paid in full. The taxpayer is also required by this bylaw change to remain current with the ongoing municipal obligations that they have, both motor vehicle and real estate or personal property, if applicable.
Thank you so much. Excellent. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Article Eight, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes, and I declare it unanimous. We are almost done with our business here tonight. The only thing I am going to plug one more time is our fantastic FinCom here is doing a heck of a job, reviewing our budget, getting ready to set budgets for next year, and yet they are still two members short. If anybody has any interest in serving on such a valuable committee, the town needs this to run. If you're concerned about where your tax dollars are going, why we're not funding certain departments, how we can better, you know, support the school district, I would really encourage anybody to reach out. Please contact me at moderator@millvilmass.org. Contact Peter Caruso, the town administrator. We would be happy to have anybody who wants to serve in this position, you know, considered for the position. Having said that, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Andrew, Andrew was on it. Andrew makes the motion to close the meeting. Is there a second? Second by Roland Barrett. Any further discussion or objections? All those in favor, oh, hold on one moment. Mr. Gamash, you would like to make a comment? Well, that's what motion to close the meeting will dissolve the warrant. Thank you. Any further discussions? All right. All those in favor, just yell out aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Have a great night, everybody, and thank you all for coming out.